Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board Trustees on March 16th, 2020. First item is to declare quorum, which we do have. The second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is the public forum. Marilyn, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes.
Okay. Item four is the superintendent's recognitions. Mrs. Parks.
brands to form the independent school district, and that is cloud construction. With you taking forward, cloud construction is partnered to support Temple ISD in a variety of ways, from fostering strategic partnerships with area businesses to advocating for our school district on legislative issues, to hosting various forums that allow the district to connect with local stakeholders.
stakeholders to help move the entire community forward. In Temple ISD, we know the value of the help that we have received from cloud construction, and we are really very deeply appreciative of the partnership. We are pleased to announce that the generosity you have shown is now recognized at the state level. The Texas Association of School Boards joins with us in honoring your valuable support of our schools. We would like to present you with this recognition certificate and a pin to you in grateful appreciation for all that you have done for our school district. Inside the folder, there is also a letter thanking you for your support, and we just cannot thank you enough for taking the charge and standing up for Texas Public Schools, and we truly appreciate your support of Temple ISD.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just make a quick comment. I think, you know, when you hire a professional service, you can hire a law firm, you can hire a construction firm, or you can hire a person or someone that you consider an extension of your family, and I will tell you, cloud construction is that for Temple ISD. They are not a construction firm, they are an extension of our family, and we really appreciate you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Well, not only the construction company, both Perry and Laura and their whole family have been supportive of TISD over the years, especially the Temple Education Foundation. You have given many countless hours to that, and just, y'all are part of the family here. Thank y'all. And Renee, too, that former teacher?
This is an honest example here.
Do you want to introduce?
All of us but two are Temple High graduates also.
Yeah.
My wife Laura, which actually is from Cameron, but, and then my sister Renee, who has graduated from Temple High School, and I won't say what year.
A long time ago, and I was a teacher here for four years.
That's right.
And a teacher mine, yeah.
And both teachers. Travis Sonne graduated from Temple High School, and Thomas Cloud graduated from Temple High School a few years ago, and his fiancee, Emily Molding, from Buta. So we're glad that she's here. Thank you very much. I would like to come up and hug each one of you, but I'll stay away. Well, except for Ronnie.
Yes. Thank y'all. Thank you, thank you.
We need this rest of the time.
And if y'all, if y'all want to go back, I think we're good now. If y'all want to. Yes. Thank you, and I'm sorry I can't hug you. But thank you. We truly appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Renee.
Appreciate everything.
You, too. Thank you so much. Mr. Posey, are you ready for me to move on? Okay. The next recognition we have is the Texas Department of Agriculture Farm Fresh Challenge. And we received a letter from Sid Miller, Commissioner of the Texas Department of Agriculture, letting us know that our school nutrition program earned the best-of-the-bunch recognition again, and so I'm going to read a portion of that letter that we received. Dear Dr. Ott, congratulations to you and your child nutrition team on your achievement in the 2019 Texas Department of Agriculture Farm Fresh Challenge, the most successful challenge yet. Your commitment to teaching children about healthy lifestyles using Texas agriculture is honorable. Texas is a recognized leader in child nutrition because of your dedication to the challenge and throughout the year. Approximately 20% of Texas school districts and charter organizations participated in the Farm Fresh Challenge this year, but your district was one of only a few that went above and beyond to achieve best-of-the-bunch recognition. So on behalf of that, we are very grateful and wanted to recognize our Department of School Nutrition, to which Kent is our designee this evening, to accept that recognition. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you very much.
Yes, of course you can.
And this, even though I'm the designee, this obviously goes to that department and goes to that group of people, and, excuse me, under the direction of Ian Vestal. And Ian, in a very short time in Temple ISD, in a short time in, in school nutrition, has, has done an exceptional job. He's been wonderful for our department. And one last thing I'd just like to say beyond this, folks from this department were there first thing this morning, serving our kids. They were there at breakfast and lunch, they're going to do that all this week, and so, again, just, I wish they could all be here to be a part of this, but, but I appreciate what they do. Again, the award is wonderful, and what they do there is wonderful, but beyond that, they're taking care of our kids, and that's what I'm most proud of them for, and so when you see them, thank them for that, and thank Ian for his, his leadership and his devotion to our district.
Our, our next recognition this evening was for our Math Counts Qualifiers, State Competition Qualifiers. And Math Counts is a national math competition program designed to develop and strengthen math, science, leadership, and teamwork skills. In February, students representing each of our middle school campuses competed in the Central Texas Chapter Math Counts Competition at Baylor University. Six students advanced to the state competition, which would have been held on March 28th, but our students that are, received that option, or that honor to move on to state, from Travis Science Academy, we had David Petrorka, Mitchell Lykins, Angelina Concha, and Alyssa Alamon. All of them are eighth graders. Then we had Emily Wong, who was a sixth grader, also from Travis Science Academy. And from Bonham Middle School, we had Zachary Zelkowski. So those students, we asked to not be present this evening, but we do have certificates that we will get to them to honor that achievement. As you know, we really like to honor any and all of our students who make it to a state level competition of any kind, and so we are very grateful for their effort, and we will make sure that they're recognized. And the last recognition we have this evening was for National Athletic Training Month. And again, we asked our staff members and our students to not be here this evening, but we do want to go ahead and recognize all that they do in their absence. National Athletic Training Month is held every March in order to spread awareness about the important work of athletic trainers. The 2020 slogan is ATS's Impact Healthcare Through Action. Athletic trainers are healthcare professionals who collaborate with physicians and specialize in the prevention, emergency care, diagnosis, treatment, and rehabilitation of injuries and sport-related illnesses. The athletic trainer is the healthcare system for athletes, and other athletic trainers are on the site. They work with patients to avoid injuries, they're there when injuries happen, and they provide immediate care, and they rehabilitate patients after injuries or surgery. It's a continuum of care, and they know their patients well because they are at the school, in the theater, on the factory floor, every single day. In honor of National Athletic Training Month, Temple ISD would like to recognize our athletic trainers, Coach Wendy Skrbonic, Coach Kelly Palmer, Coach Mike Lufner, and Coach Steve Prentice. And in addition, we typically honor our student athletic, our athletic training students this month as well. We do have certificates for them also, and we will make sure that they get them, but we just wanted to make sure that we didn't let this month go by without honoring their achievements.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Parks. Item five is executive hires. Mr. Palmer, we don't, no? Okay. Item six is board president's report. And because sort of unusual circumstances under this meeting, we're trying to expedite the meeting, I'm going to actually move the future items of discussion to the end, but we will do the important dates, which are in your packet and agenda, which you've gone over, so we won't go from here, but if there's any cancellations, Dr. Ott will let the board know. Item seven is consent items. Consideration for approval of the following group of items. Items seven A through G, one. Is there?
I'll make a motion that we approve all. Make a motion that we approve all the items A through G altogether.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gaines, seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The item passes. Thank you. Eight is action items. A, human resources. One, consideration to approve and adopt a board resolution to pay employees during emergency closure.
Mr. Posey, Dr. Ott, members of the board, before we, the approval itself is very a long, legalistic-looking document, and I wanted just to give you a little background on, on what else we've done in order to come to this point. Fortunately, when we developed the calendar last year, we actually had 5.8 days that were added to the calendar in addition to what we had to go. There's 75,600 minutes in a school year, and so when we adopted the length of our shortest day, which would be our elementary campuses, and pre-K runs the same schedule, but when we adopted that, that gave us, the amount of time that they go each day for 171 days gave us some extra time. If you look on the back of this sheet, that's the calendar, it has that broken down. It's actually at the bottom, but it's so small down there, I was afraid it'd be hard for some of us to read, including myself, and so I've, I've reprinted it on the back. There were 171 instructional days at 460 minutes per day, which gave us 78,660 minutes. There was two early releases figured in, and those are for the whole district, so that's when elementary was hit, those two Fridays, one before the Christmas break and one at the end of the year. So you had to subtract 390, that, that our total number of hours or minutes of instruction was 78,270. Now, that allowed us, when you take the 75,600 from the 78,270, that gave us about 2,670 extra minutes. And so as a result, you divide that by 460 per day, so it gave us about 5.8 days. The adjustments that we've made so far, if you remember, we took out early for Longview and went to, took a half day on that, so that subtracts 195 from it. And this week, our elementaries will be out all week for the virus, and at 460 a day for five days, that's 2,300 minutes. Subtract that from what the, the balance is currently today, that still leaves 75,775 minutes. So that gives us 175 minutes to play with between now and the time school's out, without having to make up time. So very fortunate that we just happened to have those number of days. There's no way in the world anybody would realize we'd need that many, because around here, usually snow days, one at, at most, two, I can't remember more than two, since, certainly since I've been in the school business, but no one had even an idea that we'd need five days. So I do think it's very fortunate. And this is also, if you remember the calendar that we just passed for next year, those days are built in next year as well. Hopefully, we won't need them for anything like this, but, but they are built in. So the other thing that I, I would say is, this resolution tonight allows us to make whole all of our employees. This is not only our, our hourly employees, but as well as our salaried employees, so all the teachers, administrators, hourly workers, they will all get paid based on what their hourly amount is, as well as the number of hours they work per week on a regular basis. Usually, the simplest thing to do is take what we put in the budget. So the example I always think about is like bus drivers, they don't work eight hours every day, they work 5.5. So their salary this week, they'll still get that amount, even though we're not running the buses. The other thing that we wanted to include on this is being able to pay our subs. That's an important group to us, a very important group to us with our attendance. So what we will do on our subs, it's basically anyone that had taken a job at 5:30 last Friday for this, this week will get paid for whatever jobs they took this week, and that'll certainly include our long-term subs as well. So I feel like this will cover all of our bases for the folks of part of our district, and the way that the resolution is written, it leaves a little bit open-ended for Dr. Ott to, to make that decision. If, if, if the county says we can't go next week, then we don't have to come back and redo another resolution. The only other thing I'd say on this, for those on the policy committee in Virginia, I'm almost certain you were in there when we did this, but once, somewhere several years ago, remember, we had a day that we lost, and we made it up, and we brought it to the board? It's been back about four, five years ago. We lost a day, and we made it whole for the, for the hourly people and everyone. Well, I thought we changed policy at that time, so we didn't have to bring the resolution to the board, and we allowed, at that time, Dr. Batterhill to make that decision instead of having to come to the board, but it's not in policy anymore, so we need to, that needs to be something we probably need to discuss at policy meeting to see if that's something you want in there or not, but I, I'm.
I think that was a one-time thing. I don't think we did the policy change.
Okay. I just, I know we worked on it, I just didn't know where it went afterwards, so, but in any case, we both, Dr. Ott and I, both looked for it, because I thought that, no, that's in there somewhere, but.
That sounds good.
Sounds good. Good deal. All right. So that's, anything, any questions on any of this, by the way, for, for anyone as far as what we'll be doing? Because you, I'm sure you guys get calls. We're still getting texts and calls all the time about, what do I do next? But, so if you, anything, anytime you need anything along those lines, please feel free to call me. We, we stay pretty close at hand here, the HR does, and we were on, we were pretty much talking to each other on spring break anyhow, with all this going on, so if you need anything, please be sure and call.
That's what I do, Joe, when they ask me, I send them to you.
That sounds fine. That's what I get paid for, Ronnie. So that, that, no problem, as long as it's not Lydia.
Yeah.
At this time, I'll go ahead and read the resolution to the record. Resolution of the Board Regarding Wage Payments During Emergency School Closings. Whereas the Board is authorized by Texas Education Code Section 45 dot 105 to expend funds of Temple Independent School District for purposes necessary in the conduct of the public schools as determined by the Board, and whereas the Board acknowledges that during an emergency closing, most district employees are instructed not to report to work, for work, and other employees may be called upon to provide emergency-related services, and whereas the Board finds that a need exists to address wage payments for employees who are idle and those required to work during emergency closings, and whereas the Board determines that employees who are instructed not to report to work may suffer a loss of pay if the district is closed, and whereas the Board concludes that continuing wage payments to all regular employees, contractual and non-contractual, salaried and nonsalaried, who suffer a loss in pay due to an emergency closing serves the public purposes of maintaining morale, reducing turnover, and ensuring continuity of district staffing when schools reopen, and whereas as to non-exempt employees who are called on to work during emergency closing, the Board further concludes that payment of these employees at a premium rate as provided at DEA Local serves the public purposes of maintaining morale, reducing turnover, and ensuring continuity of district staffing when schools reopen, and whereas as to non-exempt employees who are called on to work during emergency closing, the Board further concludes that payment of these employees at a premium rate as provided at DEA Local serves the public purposes of maintaining morale, providing equity between idled employees and employees who provide emergency-related services, and recognizing the services of essential staff. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Temple Independent School District authorizes continued wage payments to all regular employees, contractual and non-contractual, salaried and nonsalaried, who are instructed not to report to work during emergency closing. Be it further resolved that non-exempt employees who are required to work during emergency closing shall be paid at the premium rate described at DEA Local. The authority granted by this resolution is continued wage payments to idled employees and to pay a premium rate to non-exempt employees who provide emergency-related services is effective for the days required for this emergency closing regarding the COVID-19. Adopted this 16th day of March 2020 by the Temple ISD Board Trustees. Members, are there any questions? If not, this requires approval.
What for approval?
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Ms. Davis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. The only other thing that I might explain just real quick, that premium rate that you've heard in there several times, that basically means when an hourly employee comes in during the week, like our food services, they'll get paid time and a half for those hours they're here. So it won't be just a flat rate, they'll get, get paid, if they make $10, they'll get paid 15 for each one of those hours. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
Item eight B is curriculum instruction. I don't believe we have anything tonight. C is financing facilities. C1, consideration for approval of certification of unopposed candidates for District Two and Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. You would have that in your packet tonight, and this certification basically says that trustee District Two and Seven, currently held by Lanell Davis and Shannon Myers, who have both applied as candidates, that they are the only candidates that have, that have applied for place on the ballot, so we are able to certify them as unopposed for the election May 2nd. Any questions on that?
This requires approval. What needs a motion to a group? Move by Ms. Suarez.
I second.
Oh, seconded by Dr. Sanhi. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. C2, consideration for approval of order of cancellation for trustee election for Districts Two and Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. In conjunction with that action just taken, you will also find the order of cancellation, and because both Ms. Davis and Ms. Myers are, are unopposed for their positions, we can therefore cancel the election, and so this action, or this order of cancellation is for your consideration, and this would actually cancel the election on May 2nd. The, if, if that action is taken, those two will be sworn in at a board meeting after the election date, like they normally would under certain circumstances. Or under a normal circumstance of having an election.
Okay. This requires approval.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dr. Sanhi.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Officially.
Yes. Item C3, consideration for approval of an order authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds and directing the superintendent or assistant superintendent of Finance and Operations to serve as pricing agent within parameters set by the Board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Posey. I'll set this up real quickly. We have Jennifer Ritter tonight on, via technology, to address the group instead of in person, and I appreciate she and Christine for working together today to get this set up, so we could make this happen. You've seen the write-up in, in, in your board book. Basically, this is allowing, or what we're coming to you tonight is asking you to consider moving forward with refinancing some of the district's unlimited tax bonds, Series 2011 for savings. The 2011 bonds are currently paying interest rates between four and four and a quarter, while current market rates, well, current as of last week when we were typing this up, were between two and a half and three percent. So by refinancing, the district can replace the higher, older interest rates with new current market rates to generate significant interest savings. I will let Jennifer address this. You all have a stapled paper copy at your desk that gives the refunding analysis that Jennifer will speak to. So at this time, Jennifer, I will, yes, that is, that is what is in front of everyone, so Jennifer, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone allowing us to use this technology. So I'll be a brief here. Essentially, what we're looking at doing is a refinancing, as you've done in the past for savings, as, as Boyd mentioned, when interest rates drop, we have that opportunity. The first right there, or the first chart that you have is a 10-year history of tax-exempt rates as of last week, and I'll caveat all of this by saying that interest rates are anyone's guess this week, but nonetheless, this action allows us to take action should interest rates be favorable over a 12-month period. So essentially, this is basically getting the ball rolling and allow you, allowing you to take advantage. We're not saying that you should do this today, and we'll talk about that momentarily. But over a 10-year period here, you can see as of last week, interest rates essentially had been higher than they were last week, about 88% of the time. Prior to that week, they'd been higher 100% of the time. We're here on that far right-hand side. If you look at the next page, what I want to show you is that since we've had kind of the virus catching, unfortunately, and starting to spread here in the United States, interest rates have been moving, we were sort of moving in the opposite direction of the stock market, which had improved the bond market, but over the last few days, there just really hasn't been a lot of activity one way or the other, with a lot of traders essentially not coming into work, and a lot of people trying to take money out of the financial markets just to have cash available. So this isn't the best day in the market, I'll say, but again, this is a 12-month action. But as you can see here on the, on the second page, six-month history of tax-exempt yields and taxable yields, you can kind of see what I wanted to show you, though, over the past six months, interest rates are simply bouncing around quite a bit, and we'll talk about that momentarily. But as Mr. Boyd mentioned here, what we're looking at doing is refinancing portions of your Series 2011 bonds. Those actually are callable until February 1st of 2021. Under the tax bill that passed and went to effect in 2018, we're not allowed to take advantage of refundings the way we do, well in advance of the call date. Now, all we can do is, is take advantage, essentially 90 days or three months in advance of the call date. So you've been receiving several proposals to do what's called a taxable refunding. You can do a taxable refund any time, but you forego your tax-exempt rates, which are a little bit better. So we've been looking at a couple of combinations of either doing this on a taxable basis now to avoid having to wait for that 90-day window, which will start essentially in November of this year, or waiting till November, which again, this authorization tonight would allow you to do that, or do something called a forward, which essentially, we would lock in interest rates today, but not actually close until November. There's a little bit of a premium to do that, but you can sell it on a tax-exempt basis, and the interest rates are better. All of that to say that you have several options, so we've been working with Kent and Callan to essentially determine what's going to be best for the district, and the action tonight essentially allows us to start moving forward and seeing what that may be. I fully expect the financial markets to be kind of not really in the best position over the next month to two, but we can start getting ready in terms of the offering document, we can start getting ready in terms of maybe applying for the rating, applying for the permanent school fund guarantee, so that when people do have that money and the faith in the financial market starts to return, we're in a position to take advantage of it quickly. So if you look at what we've done, you know, last week, essentially on that page labeled Page Three, the savings there are estimated to be, on that far right-hand side, the far-right-hand column, almost 3.9 million in savings by taking advantage of this on the second option, which is what we call the, the tax-exempt forward refunding. On a percentage basis, that represents about 11.2% less than what you're currently paying on these bonds. The next page labeled Four is essentially just a bigger chart, what those savings would be. You can see in some years, they're almost as much as $400,000, so pretty significant there, and actually might be noticeable in terms of a portion of your tax rate. And then moving forward, we're showing the preliminary sources and uses of funds, that is. 11.2% less than what you're currently paying on these bonds. The next page labeled Four is essentially just a bigger chart, what those savings would be. You can see in some years, they're almost as much as $400,000. So pretty significant there, and actually might be noticeable in terms of portion of your tax rate. And then moving forward, we're showing the preliminary sources and uses of funds. That just shows where the money's coming from and where it's going. As in any type of financing, there are cost of issuance that are associated with this, and those would have to be paid. But the savings that we're referencing are after those issuance costs have been paid. So the approximately 3.9 or 4, or whatever it turns out to be, million in savings is after the district has paid those costs. Those are savings directly back to the district taxpayers. Page Six, I think, is probably the most pertinent one for you here tonight, and I just want to call your attention to, because rates are bouncing around so much, that middle column there that says rates as of 3/11/20 is the number that we just discussed, that we ran. If you look to the left, two columns, you can see that if interest rates were to drop 0.5%, and then the next column, 0.25%, that top row there shows you essentially an interest rate sensitivity, with the moving around so much, how much savings could increase, or if we go tight, how much they could decrease if interest rates were to move up. I know that's a lot of information for you all to have, but I simply want to show you that where we are today at the 3.9 million could get better if interest rates were to drop to where they were even two to three weeks ago, to the tune of maybe even saving $5 million. Or alternatively, if interest rates were to increase, you can see there on the far-right-hand side, if they were to go up 0.75%, almost percentage point, you know, you'd still be saving about $2 million. So the savings are still there, it's just pretty variable. The action tonight would be a delegation. The page kind of outlines what the Board would be delegating, but essentially, you'd be delegating, as you've done on your other sales in the past, to the superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Finance and Operations to price on your behalf. This lasts for 12 months, and essentially, what it does is, we don't have to come back to the Board. We can take advantage of the market when the market's best to lock in the highest savings. So that would be the action. It gives you the ability to do this as taxable or tax exempt. That's a discussion that we'll have, again, with your administration, to see what makes the most sense in terms of do we want to go ahead and lock in savings, or should we wait until these become currently callable in November and see what tax exempt rates would be. There's a minimum threshold in here of 5% savings. We're obviously well in excess of that. The goal would probably be to be, you know, where we are today, but we do, in the documents, have to have a minimum savings threshold to be able to move forward. And then at last, or the second-to-last point there, the maturity would be February 1, 2036. That's simply to point out that we wouldn't be extending the term of these. These bonds would have matured on February 1 of 2036. We're not stretching it out to make it look like they're savings. So we are binding ourselves, obviously, here to keep the term the same as it would have been, and that the par won't be in excess of what you're actually refunding. So I know that's a lot of information to kind of... And, you know, two weeks ago, this was really a slam dunk, and then since what's happened, it's something that we probably want to look at for a little while before we move forward. But again, this is a 12-month authorization, and it just puts us in the position, should rates turn around, and I think everybody thinks they will at some point or another, that we'd be ready to go. Once it becomes currently callable in February, and again, we have 90 days prior to that in November to take advantage, basically every six months that you don't do it, you're paying more interest than you should have. So at that point, it becomes, you know, even if the savings are only say $3 million opposed to the four that we're looking at today, it might make sense. And those are conversations that we'll have in conjunction with your administrative staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I appreciate the technology. Hopefully, that wasn't all too garbled.
That's very good. Members, do we have any questions for Jennifer and Kent? I think some of the key things, like to summarize, as Jennifer said, we'll monitor this. We've got plenty of time. If it is not financially positive for us to do it, we won't do it, obviously. And there's a threshold there that we will not, you know, we'll make sure the savings are that. And then any savings that we will recognize, those are things that simply save on our bonded indebtedness tax rate down the line. So it directly saves taxpayers on the amount of interest we're paying on bonds in the future. Okay. Is that okay, Jennifer?
Yeah, and one more point that I should have mentioned, I apologize for not mentioning it, is that this doesn't, I think, which is sort of essentially what you said, doesn't obligate you to do anything, but it gives you the opportunity to do it. It also doesn't trigger any cost. The only time you would pay cost to do this is if the deal actually worked. So those cost of issuance that we discussed are only triggered if it's actually a successful transaction. But this just gives you the ability to move forward, should it be successful, and you don't have to come back and get authorization while we wait on the market.
Okay. Members, this is an approval item, requires action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Myers, seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer, for skyping in. Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate it.